Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, July 7, 2020, meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Please direct your attention to Vice Chairman Larry Ryan of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ryan?
Hi, yeah. I present the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this nation undergoes individual with liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you, Larry. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrps.com, wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meeting and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. I think we'll start with the chairman position and I will open up to comments from the other members of the Board of Selectmen.
I'd like to make some comments.
By all means.
All right. So, we have, for this past year, I think this board has functioned very, very well. We, we came off from just over a year ago with Larry Ryan in place during a really, you know, a crazy time. You know, he brought us through all kinds of issues. And last year at this time, we made the change and had Mike move into the role as Chair and Larry and Vice Chair. And we didn't miss a beat. And honestly, I think, Mike, honestly, with your, your organization, how you are involved day-to-day in this town, I, I think, while against what I said when I ran, that I didn't believe that a chairman should stay more than one year, I'm going back on what I said because I truly believe with the job that Mike has done, I don't think, and this isn't against anyone else on the board, including myself, I don't think there's anyone on the board who can do a better job for the town of Rockland than Michael Loughlin.
Thank you, Rich. And Mike Mullen, I saw that you unmuted your phone, so I'm sure you have a comment.
No, thank you. At first I was actually going to nominate, I'll actually myself, for the position. But after hearing what Rich said, I like, I wholeheartedly agree. I, you know, Mike, I mean, what, all you have done, the leadership you've brought, oh, you know, and follow Larry with as our chairman, you know, you know, we've all seen how you have worked hand-in-hand with Doug, you know, Doug Lapp, our new town administrator over the last year. And, you know, I firmly believe that if, oh, you know, like if something is not broken, then we don't try to fix it. And like, I really do believe in our chairman right now, like we have, oh, you know, someone who like has demonstrated to all of us that, oh, you know, and not only can you do it, you have the time to do it. Oh, you know, you try to really encourage an environment that's very inclusive and, oh, you know, will really reflect all of our priorities and not only our priorities, but the town, like in our residents, oh, you know, priorities as well. So, like, I wholeheartedly, oh, you know, oh, you know, support everything that Rich just mentioned. Like, and if he didn't make a motion, I'd be proud to second that as well.
All right, I'll just, I'll go to, thank you, Mike. I'll go to Larry and Kara first, just in case there's any other thoughts. Mr. Ryan?
Doing a great job. And we have a new administration that still is working to educating themselves, our town and all the problems we have with it. And with our experience and leadership on the FinCom and your knowledge of the town, it's been a great help to the current administration and they've portrayed that to the rest of us so that we know that things are going on okay. So, I have to agree with my fellow select people that you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Larry. Kara?
I think my colleagues have summed it up nicely once again, but I couldn't agree more with them on this issue. Mike, you've been a friend and a mentor to all of us, especially towards me, all my first term on the Board of Selectmen. I don't think anyone could do a better job right now than you as chairman and leader student of the year.
Okay, so, thank you, guys. So with that, I entertain a motion.
Yeah, so I didn't make a motion after my first comment because I wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to speak. So I would like to be the one that makes the motion to appoint Michael Loughlin as chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the next year.
Yeah, yes, and I'll second that. Oh, up that. Thanks. So, all those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. It's been a interesting year, to say the least. It seems every time, you know, we think we're coming out of something, something, something even bigger comes along. And, you know, I think as a team, we've done a decent job of communicating and supporting Doug and his team, which I think is the most crucial thing that we do, just helping them and giving them the space to do their jobs. So, with that,
Chairman?
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, this is Vice Chairman Ryan, and I am going to step down and I'm going to nominate Kara Nyman to take over my spot as Vice Chairman. I think she is ready to get involved with the town and more deeply and learn the inner workings of what we do here on a day-to-day basis. So, that would be my nomination.
Anybody else?
Larry, I, I wholeheartedly agree. You know, I think, looking at this board, you know, I think it is time for that younger generation to have that opportunity to step up. Nothing against me and you, Larry, but we're, we're on the, we're on the downside. And I do think this is a perfect opportunity to allow Kara to step into this role and take more of a leadership position within the town. So, I would second that nomination.
Mr. Mullen, any thoughts?
No, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, again, I was hoping someone would nominate, I'll actually me. But, oh, you know, oh, you're not having that been the case, I wholeheartedly support everything that Rich, Alec and Larry have mentioned. And, oh, you know, I, like, I would be extremely proud, oh, you know, to have, oh, you know, Kara and you leading us forward. So, I like, I wholeheartedly support that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I agree. I agree with what everybody else said. You know, Kara, you've, you've certainly stepped up in the year and a half or 18 months you've been on the board. It hasn't been easy and it's been trial by fire. You know, like I said, it's been a really crazy, you know, year and a half. And, you know, I look forward to seeing you grow in the role as Vice Chairman. And my hope is to continue to work with you and have you possibly in the seat next year, this time. So, I like to take, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And myself, is a yes. Kara, will you accept it?
I will.
Okay, excellent. Great. Okay, moving on. Community announcements. Healthcare Worker of the Week. Mr. Lapp?
Thank you, everyone. Pleased to announce the latest healthcare worker of the week. I'm going to read her statement. Her name is Betsy Wiley. She said, "I have lived in Rockland for the last 18 years. I've worked in an inpatient cardiac care unit at Boston Medical Center as a staff nurse for the past 20 years. I also work part-time at Vinfen, caring for developmentally delayed adults in a rehabilitation setting for 12 years. Bear in mind, I bachelor's of science in nursing from Northeastern University. This community has been amazingly supportive to me and my family while I took care of COVID-19 patients. I love being a nurse. Thank you to the town of Rockland. This is why I love living here and the people who live in it." So, want to thank her and congratulate her, and we appreciate everything that she's doing. That's the only announcement that I have tonight.
Okay, excellent. Be with me one second, my agenda closed. Okay, open session minutes for June 16, 2020. I like to take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Ryan? Oh, actually, Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. That's approved. Next on the agenda, new business, school committee vacancy appointment per NGL Chapter 41, Section 11. So, this came up about a month, month and a half back when Mr. Phelps, you know, resigned from the board for, you know, health reasons. So what happens is, is we post it and between, you know, ourselves, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, we vote on the position, who would take that, that position until the next election comes up. So this position, if I understand correct, would run from now until our April election. And then there would be an election for the rest of Mr. Phelps' term, which I believe would be one year at that point. So with that, I will turn it over to School Committee Chairperson, Joe Maroni. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman Loughlin. I just want to confirm with Dr. Kron about that.
I was going to say, Mr. Loughlin, I'm not sure about that. I thought that, that Mr. Biggins would finish up the term that Mr. Phelps had earned. That was my understanding. So we can confirm that with council?
Yeah, we need to double-check from stuff on the charter.
I believe that's the case, and there's nothing in the charter about it. I read it today.
So we talked to a couple of people on, on the charter, and they had said that if the appointment would be made, it might be different with school committee, I think it was for us, it was till the next election is available. So in the case of when we, you know, appointed, you know, a couple of people before, or rather, when they, you know, won the election, it was just until the next election was available and then, but we can double-check that. So either way, it's for Dick's campaign, you know, Dick's seat until, you know, we figure out if it's April or if it's further than that. But we can get that, but that won't change what, what any, any kind of discussion or movement forward for tonight, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear before we move forward, that we all understood, but we're not sure. Thank you. Again, I want to just say thank you to the two that put themselves in for appointment, Mr. Biggins and Mrs. Forrester. These are big shoes to fill. Mr. Phelps was huge for here, for us here on the school committee and in Rockland itself. And like we've said, this year has been a topsy-turvy year. So to put yourself up into this involuntarily is big to me, and I appreciate them trying to jump in. And so that's kind of all I have to say. Thank you for jumping in. I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Loughlin.
Okay, so I'll open it up to, to anybody that has, has any, any discussion about the two candidates?
Do we have the two candidates available?
I'm here, Mr. Ryan.
Okay, we have Dan and who else we got? There's the other young lady also?
It's Mrs. Forrester, and I don't believe that she is here.
Yes. Should we hear from them?
Well, I don't believe she's here with us, Larry.
Oh, okay. Firstly, you know, Dan has already been on the board. He's familiar with the, with the players involved in the current status of the school's issues. The other woman I haven't heard of for a while, and she's probably very capable also, so. Is it the guy that's been in the fray? Or do we, of course, for a different look at it? I would tend myself to go with Mr. Biggins, only because of his experience, current experience, and is still his relationship with the school committee people and the principal and the superintendent of the schools itself. So, either, either one would probably be a good candidate, but I think Mr. Biggins has the most experience to help us deal immediately with all the conferences that are presented to us in the town.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments about either of the candidates?
Oh, if I could, Mr. Chair, and I agree wholeheartedly with Larry. I think where, oh, you know, Dan has been with the school committee, his understanding of the issues about where we are, in how he could work with, you know, the current school committee, the school administration, like in the town, you know, to help, oh, you know, oh, really continue to move the ball forward, oh, like I think is really an asset at this point. And, oh, you know, oh, like, oh, and especially in terms of understanding the, oh, you know, the partnership and the dynamics between the town and schools, you know, oh, you know, based on the issues that, oh, you know, had, that Dan had been involved in previously, there's no better person, oh, oh, really in my mind, who understands all that. So, I wholeheartedly agree, Mr. Ryan.
Okay. Anybody else? Any further discussion on the matter?
Yeah, I just,
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a comment. I want to thank both of them, both Mr. Biggins and Ms. Forrester for stepping up. As it was mentioned, filling the shoes of, you know, virtually a town legend in Dick Phelps is, is not an easy task. I do think, fortunately, I know both individuals, one of which I literally have known my entire life, and I think both of them are volunteering to step up for the right reasons, that they, they care about the town, they care about the children of the town, and I don't think we could go wrong in either selection. But to Larry and Mike's point, Dan has, he is, he has the experience, he has shown in the past what he has done for the, for the school system. So I would have no problem at all with, with Dan in that position. But I did want to say thank you to, to Ms. Forrester for, for volunteering and willing to step up.
Okay, any, any further comments before we, for, I call for a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a few comments?
Absolutely.
I also want to thank Mrs. Forrester for stepping up and, you know, applying to be appointed to this position. As a board, I think we're always encouraging new people and new faces to, you know, step, be involved on committees in town. So I want to thank her for coming forward. But I also have to agree with the board on that. Dan has been a great asset to the school committee over the years, and I hope her role in this position.
Okay, so we've heard from the Selectmen. Any comments from any of the members of the school committee on the issue, seeing as it will be a committee member of yours?
I would, but if someone else, Emily or Jamie?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Dan. I think going with him and him coming back into the school committee is a great option. He has the experience, he has a voice of reason that a lot of people in town listen to and look up to, especially with the school, kind of in unknown of going back in the fall, just with COVID. I think all together, the five of us are going to work very well together, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Joe?
I would have to agree with Emily. I think she said exactly what I was feeling as well, that I think the five of us will work really well together. I don't want to discourage Mrs. Forrester or chiming in maybe at a later time, but I really do think that right now, the schools, the town, the students, the faculty, all sort of need what we know. We need to roll together. We have a lot on our plates. And we want this to be sort of seamless, and we don't really have time to figure things out. We are sort of in the world of unknown, and Dan has that knowledge and the ability to be able to work with us and keep us going and, like you said, moving forward. So I appreciate Forrester for stepping up, but I also appreciate Dan for coming back and jumping back in. I'm sure it wasn't easy. It's not an easy job every day, and it is every day. But we are here to do what we do and because we love the kids in this town. So, thank you both. That's all I have.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mills is just here. I'm sorry to cut you off, Mike. I just wanted to give him a minute. Do you want to chime in, Mr. Mills?
No, I have, I, I just, I don't know what you're talking about, so. Just go on.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Did you have any comment to Mr. Biggins or Mrs. Forrester coming on to the board with us?
No, that'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, then I will make a motion to have Mr. Biggins fill the spot for Mr. Phelps to be appointed for us on the school committee. Second?
Motion and a second. This will call a vote. Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes as well. Dan, welcome back to the board.
Thank you, everybody. And just a quick comment, I just want to stress that I can't underestimate how big these shoes really are to fill. Mr. Phelps is someone, as you all know, that I admire very much, and his impact on this committee and these, these kids in our town and school faculty and staff is undoubted and undisputed, just an amazing guy. And the schools are going to miss him. I will miss him on, working with him on this committee. But I know he's still around and around town. We'll be, I know we can all look forward to seeing our friend, Mr. Phelps, around. But I am very much looking forward to finishing out his term, whatever is left of it, whatever's appropriate, whether a year or more, whatever it is you guys need of me, I'm happy to help for it. And just looking to be a part of the solutions to the many challenges that we have going forward as a school community.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Just when you thought you were out, right?
Well, never get out, just, always here to help, always here to help. But in this role, I thought sort of had concluded, but sometimes life throws a curveball and you just got to hit it. So looking forward to getting back to work with you all.
Absolutely. All right. So moving on, so the school committee, I mean, you guys are welcome to stay. I'm not sure if you guys, if you are needing to adjourn your meeting?
No, we need to adjourn it.
They don't need to, okay.
Begging motion to adjourn that school committee meeting.
Second that? What?
You can call all those in favorites. It's your group.
All those in favor?
I, Tom Mills said yes.
Tom Mills says yes. Jamie and Emily are both putting their hands up as yes. Sorry, Mike, I liked you talking not. It was good.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Next on the agenda, zoning board of appeals vacancy, alternate to permanent member appointment, a five-year term for Robert Baker.
May I?
Yeah, absolutely, Ryan.
Hence, appointing Mr. Baker to a five-year term. I just don't think he fits the bill right now, but what we need is a town. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, yeah, I just have a quick question. I mean, in terms of advertising, oh, you know, the, what I assume is a vacant, is a vacant, our regular, a regular member position, oh, you know, should we first try to advertise it? Or is there something different about this, like where we have a time is of the essence issue?
Well, you know, I don't think we have a time is of the essence issue. I think it's one of those things that, that there's an opening for a permanent member. My, my bigger concern is that there are, I think Mr. Baker is the last of the alternates, so it pretty much defaults to him. So I don't think, I don't think there's any rush to fill the seat. He can vote as an alternate until we get more alternates and maybe deepen that pool to pick from, to assign somebody for a five-year position. I mean, Tom, Tom, you work, Mr. Ruble, you work with the zoning board more than the rest of us. Mr. Baker is currently the only alternate on the board, right? You're muted, Tom?
That's right.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, we'd pretty much be handing over a position by default. So I think maybe, Mike, if I hear what you're saying is, I guess maybe table it until we appoint, we advertise that we're looking for, for other members on, on the board, fill some of the alternate positions, and then, then come back with it and take a look at who is looking to apply for that permanent position.
Mike, I agree. So, you know, not that long ago, we had a similar scenario with the, with the zoning board. And we, I think we did a very good job of, of posting it, getting the information out. If I remember right, we ended up probably with about five or six candidates. And I'm going to be honest, what we were able to put on the zoning board was, was a pretty high-level few people that went on there. I, I think that there are a lot of people in town with skill sets to do this. I just think at time, at times, people are either unaware, or we don't do a good job of getting that information out to the right people. I would, you know, I would look to do this, post it, try to make it as public as possible, talk it up on the, on the Board of Selectment meetings, get it out there, get it out on social media. And let's see what we can get for some, some candidates. So it isn't, you know, nothing against Bobby Baker, but, so it's not just a default because no one else applied for it.
Yeah, and, and I think to that point, is this, as an alternate, you know, being that there's an empty spot, it wouldn't stop anything from, any votes from happening because he would just be a voting member at that point as an alternate. So, you know, I, I think we've been really hesitant to, to have our hands forced. I, I think, you know, we've kind of looked at that and, and said, you know, nobody gets a position by default, right? And to your point, nothing against Bob Baker at all, nothing at all. But when somebody's presented to us as the only option, you know, it's, I think I'd like to see if there's other candidates, anybody that wants to get onto the zoning board as an alternate, and then I think we're allowed to, what, have three alternates, Tom? Mr. Ruble, three alternates on the,
What was that?
How many alternates are you allowed on the zoning?
I believe there's two. But there's two because we lost a couple of members that are already,
I think you're allowed up to what, three alternates total?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we look to fill those positions and then, and then take a look and, and, you know, touch base with the zoning chair and go from there. So, I guess what I'm hearing is,
Take a motion that we put it off till the September, first meeting in September, and advertise between now and then because there is no big hurry. We have a full board that can function with the, with the format and the alternate.
Yeah, I'm checking that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes, I.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. All right, so, so that's a vote to table the appointment to the zoning board of appeals until first meeting in September. Doug, you good with that, advertising? Doug, you good with that? Advertising, advertising position? I think, I think there's a need for, for two positions because I, I don't think we have any more alternates. So it'd actually be a need for three positions. One of them would be going to the permanent member and three alternates, so.
Yeah, that, that's totally fine. I'll work with the chairman of the ZBA, make sure we have the number correctly and we'll do some extensive advertising.
Sounds great. Thank you, Doug. All right, moving on, FY 20 year-end transfers. Mr. Lab?
You know, I'm just going to hand this one right off to our town accountant and Biz can take care of this one.
That's great.
Okay, good evening. Each year between May 15th and July 15th, the communities are allowed to do year-end transfers to balance individual line budgets. At this time, we have very few that we have to do. I'm requesting roughly $155,000 based on estimated deficits in various departments. You all have a copy of this. If you'd like me to go over the departments, I will. But otherwise, I'm just going to blanket it at 155,000 of which we'll be taking the money and fulfilling those deficits with other budgeted items. What's unusual this year is the finance committee and the board of selectmen will not be meeting again until August. So I am also requesting that the town accountant is requesting permission to complete additional year-end transfers as necessary up to the date of July 15th, 2020 in accordance with MGL 4433B, transfer appropriations year-end transfers. The town accountant will provide the board of selectmen and the finance committee of any additional transfers at the scheduled August meetings. Currently, I might have three or four more to do, but they'll be transferred within the budgets. We don't need outside revenue to cover any deficits and we're just now finishing our last June 30 accounts payable report. So once that's complete, once we get into August, as I'm closing the books, I can give you an update. So I'm kind of requesting a little bit of leeway here from you, but I've also informed you of what we're looking at right now. Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions from the board?
I'm here.
No, I don't have any either. That all makes perfect sense. Thank you, Biz, for all you work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Biz.
Thank you.
And on that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the $155,000 in transfers.
Back it.
Motion and second. All those in favor, Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay.
The second part of that, Mr. Chairman, would be to, that's okay, would be to vote the town accountant's request to continue year-end transfers. That's part two.
Don't move.
Second.
You guys are, you guys are all, all over these motions tonight. This is, this is crazy. All right, I got a motion and a second. Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
All right, this unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Biz. All right, moving on. McKinley School Community Center feasibility study, Studio MLA Architects. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So with us tonight, we have Liz Hall and Mike Lindstrom from StudioMLA Architects. And I'm going to ask Liz if she can share her screen and pull up a PowerPoint presentation to share. And I think once she gets that up, I think I'm going to actually kick it off with one of the first slides. And then others will be doing the rest and I think I'll close it out on the last slide. So if we go on to the first slide or the second slide. So I thought it would just be helpful to give a little bit of a background about this project. So as a reminder, this, this feasibility study and facility assessment of the McKinley School was funded a little over a year ago at last year's annual town meeting. And that was funded with a $30,000 appropriation. We put together a team of, in addition to the architects, which I'll talk about in a moment, we have a, a town staff group that includes myself, the assistant town administrator, Jan Constable, our youth commission director, Gene Blaney, youth commission chairman, Rich Furlong, our building inspector, Tom Ruble, and our school department facilities director, Mark Shum. And I think everybody's with us tonight on the Zoom meeting except for Mark who wasn't able to join us. But I want to thank all the staff that helped with this because it was a really good team effort and everybody kind of came at it from their own angle with their own insights and, and pieces of knowledge that I think helped the architects frame a really good, a really good study. The other thing I wanted to highlight about this firm, StudioMLA, is they're really excellent, they're highly qualified, and we, we selected them through the competitive request for qualifications process, which is part of the state's designer selections law. So we, we followed that process and as part of it, we did include language that if the town ultimately decides to actually fund this project, we can continue with StudioMLA without having to do a whole nother RFQ again. But you'll see as they go through this presentation that they're very experienced and very knowledgeable and I think they'll get a lot out of it. So with that, I'll think Gene Blaney is going to do the next slide before we go into the others.
Thanks, Doug. So as most everybody knows on this board that we host several different programs in the community center. First being the Rockland Youth Commission. We've been, been there for, actually, I don't even know how long because Karen was there before me, but I've been there for six years in this space and it is definitely a great space to have and I feel very lucky to have it. We also have Rockland Daycare. They are a very large part of this building. They take up two floors or really one and a half. And, and then we also have the historical commission. They have a room on the third, or they had a room on the third floor. And then the other programs that we have is self-help. So self-help offers free programming from, for children, infants to six years or just entering kindergarten. We have a lot of folks that can't afford our preschool programs and rely on self-help for development of their children. We have the WIC program. WIC is, I want to say it's a state-funded program. I'm not 100% positive on that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure. And they're a big part of our, they're, they're in our building every Wednesday and it is a flow of traffic from the young women and men in Rockland that need their services. So they provide subsid, subsidy servants, I can't even talk, I'm really sorry. It's been a very long day. Subsidized services such as they give them formula diapers and then point, kind of give them direction on where to find other subsidy programs. The Girl Scouts meet, wow, I think we have five Girl Scout groups that actually meet at our facility. And we do, I think we do a really good job of managing them and rotating them through the building. They utilize it for not only their meetings, but their functions. Boy Scouts actually meet probably once a month. We have a, a couple of troops that come and use our facility, mostly the gym and the community, community room. And then we have other communities, other, other people within the community that needed our building on sometimes a regular basis, sometimes it's just once a month. But, you know, we, we have a pretty good impact on our community. I neglected to say for the youth commission, we have all of our youth and sports programs as well as our taught enrichment program, which is our preschool program that we've been running. I think I want to say it's been since the seventies. In addition to that, our teen center program, which everybody knows and loves and has grown over the past couple of years. They actually are in the gym and in part of the basement area. I think that about does it.
Thanks, Gene. Hi, everybody. My name is Liz Hall. I'm an architectural designer at StudioMLA. Also on this call is our principal, Mike Lindstrom, and I believe our landscape director is also on the line, Joanne Hiramura. I'm just going to get right into it. If you hear any strange noises like firework for the road, that is because I'm on a main drag. So our mission to improve in gen, like big picture, the quality, obviously the quality in, in of the interior and exterior spaces, meaning updating everything from finishes to systems to the facade. And then by doing that and changing the floor plans a little bit, and by doing that, we would improve the quality and the quantity possibly of the programs served. So there's a lot of inefficient spaces. There's a lot of storage that we could probably move around and, and gain some extra space and really improve the quality for, for the patrons. Then another big one is the accessibility and the safety of the building. So, you know, for example, right now the elevator malfunctions, it's too small. We've got some accessibility, but not all spaces are accessible, meaning handicapped accessible. And some exterior spaces, pedestrian travel are a little confusing, so that could improve the safety of the building. Then the building itself is on the National Historical Register. So we would want to maintain that. It's just starting to, to fall into some need of repair and it would be good to upgrade those to maintain that landmark. And then as I understand it, there's a big revival on Union Street. And I think both the visual of the building and then the proposed exterior improvements would be a catalyst in that revival to really improve the, the streetscape and the view from the street.
I just jump in for a second, Liz, and say that I think we've found a remarkable.
You're breaking up a little.
A lot of the challenges, there's a lot of work to do here. So I think, you know, that's the bigger, I think the, the whole Rockland team has been really great to work with and they, they've taken a really common sense, you know, attitude toward this, but as was an approach that would really, really fix everything, right? So that's.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump back in, Mike, just so you know, you're breaking up a little bit, but I, I think you may have gotten the gist here. The pros definitely outweigh the cons, but we want to upgrade to make it all pro. So here's the timeline. We started by doing a, an analysis of what was there. We visited the site, we spoke with the team that we've heard about before. And did a phase one report that sort of documented how the building is now and, you know, room, areas that we saw room for improvement on. Then phase two, we took that information and documented the spaces that you currently have in the building and created. And so that's what, when I say programming in this list right here, that's what that is, a list of spaces. And so then we created three new programs with the help of the team for the ideal, for the ideal concept options. And then with those spaces, meaning square footages and stuff, we went forward and made three floor plan options for each floor and for the landscape, we did two options. And then with those, we could get preliminary pricing. So then that could inform us when we went on to phase three, which you'll see is a little longer than originally anticipated for reasons I'm sure we're all familiar with. And finalize that into a cohesive design that we felt would be most beneficial and then get some final pricing on that. And we did some renderings of the spaces, which I'll show at the, towards the end. So I'm going to go through all of that briefly, each phase. So phase one, building evaluation, the exterior. So the front yard, and I will, there are pictures after this slide. But the front yard is sort of, you know, unattractive and as I was saying before, it would really help to upgrade it from the perspective of Union Street. And really be more inviting to patrons. Then the playgrounds need some improvement for, you know, just, if you drive by, you can see there's some sort of donated furniture and playground equipment. It would be, be good to upgrade those and then also upgrade those so that we could achieve, achieve higher certification for the daycare. The back lot, the back parking lot is sort of, it's striped a little, but it's not striped efficiently and has some spatial inefficiencies that, that we want to, we want to take back and reorganize into a better area for the staff and patrons. Then the exterior walls and everything on the outside, there's a lot of damage and I'll go through some pictures and show you. In the masonry, in the wood, soffits and everything out there, there's the cast stone along the base of the building and the columns is all broken away and needs to be repaired. And those all things that I just mentioned are historically significant. So it's definitely a high priority thing to repair. So here's a picture of the front yard and I hope that you all can see my mouse. Don't mind when the mouse hovers over it. It comes up with an automatically generated caption for some reason. So along, you can see all of the disrepair on the wood and when we get a little closer, you can see it on the brick, but you can see even from this viewpoint, you can see the damage on the cast stone along the foundation. It's a picture that I was mentioning before of the playground equipment. And on the right, again, you can see the cast stone damaged with safety barricades in front of it, not only for that, but for snow. We'll get into it a little later, but the, the roof, you know, the snow rail, some of it is damaged and some of the slate pieces are damaged and need to be replaced. And so we've got some barricades out there for safety purposes. Again, more damage along the roof line. You can see damage on the exterior walls, above doors. The steel in the, in the window lintels is starting to rust in, in almost all of them and some of them, it's extreme to the point where it's damaging the, the brick along. So the lintel is just above here and below. And so it starts to push the brick out when it starts to rust. And then on the back area where the gym is, you'll see that some of the truck is going by. You'll see that some of the panels on the, on the panel addition are falling off. And so we're recommending that those be checked and see, you know, which other ones are loose and need to be repaired. And those, that was not a comprehensive list. I'll just say that. We have an entire report that has the comprehensive list of things that need to be repaired. Just wanted to highlight major things. So in the interior, at worst, the finishes are worn and old outdated at, or at best, sorry, and at worst, they're damaged and, and need to be replaced. So meaning the paint, the flooring, the ceiling, the lights, the doors. And as I mentioned before, the space isn't really used efficiently and it creates a lot of redundancy and wasted space. And as I mentioned before, not all spaces are accessible, with the elevator malfunctioning and not being correctly sized for accessibility. And on the second and third floor, half of the floor plate is raised up about 21 inches and there's a ramp on the second floor, which is not an accessible ramp. And then on the third floor, there are no ramps. It's just stairs up to those areas, which would not be acceptable accessibility-wise for the public. And then I've mentioned all the rest of this, the elevator, the mechanical, electrical equipment and plumbing have all really reached their useful lifespan, is how the engineers put it. And the mechanical needs to be fully replaced, the plumbing, there are certain things that need to be replaced and, and same with electrical. There's a lot, a lot of systems work that needs to happen before the pretty finishes can, can really do their work properly. And then along those lines, the sprinkler system, right now, I believe, I believe Doug, it, it got, it's officially a go, but right now, basement through the second floor are sprinkled and there's a project intended party in the works to get the third floor sprinkled. So here's some just pictures of the interior. This is the teen center downstairs. It, it functions, but it's, it sort of feels like you're in a space that you're, you're making use of, you know, it's not really for them. It feels a little alien. They've done a really great job of creating posters and making it feel homey, but I feel like we. They've done a really great job of creating posters and, and making it feel homey, but I feel like we could do a lot better for them. Then the gym is, um, the flooring really needs to be replaced and the lighting and the walls. You know, if you painted them, it would be one thing, but really repairing them and painting them would be best. And here's some pictures of the efficiencies, inefficiencies that I've been talking about. There used to be a kitchen down here when it was school and it's not used anymore, but it's just sort of got all this extra equipment and this big HVAC exhaust unit and, and just kind of is used for storage and, and isn't used efficiently. Same with um some decommissioned bathrooms in the basement. And they're being used for storage right now with the toilets and everything still there. And I wanted to get some pictures of the systems that need to be replacing. For example, you know, all this exposed piping typically by code needs to be insulated and is not currently. And obviously, general, you can see that things are in disrepair on the walls and everything. This is in the basement. Then the classrooms on the second floor and third floor, um, third floor is empty, but everything just, you can see the flooring really needs to replace. The, the ceiling is very, very dirty and the lights are old and the daycares themselves need to be upgraded. Um, if they're gonna go for a certain licensing, EEC licensing, um with things like food preps and changing stations. We'll get into that. Then there are certain areas like this picture where there's a lot of water damage above the ceiling causing mold. Which is, I don't need to tell you is bad. So the general layout, I won't, you know, point everywhere, every room, but the basement is where the teen center is and the gym where my pointer is. And then there's like a lot of storage and systems around this sort of perimeter area. And um WIC space was down here. Then the first floor where you enter, where my mouse is, is where you enter the building with the big stair. That's where the administrative areas are to the left and right when you walk in. And to the back of where, where you walk in are the two community rooms that are separated by a movable partition. And then this room in the corner is a, a multipurpose rooms used for the self-help program and the bottom two rooms are daycare. Second floor is all daycare, um with a sort of a, a room to spare that we utilize in the future plans. And then like I said, the third floor is abandoned, but um historical commission uses it for storage and meetings sometimes. So phase two, that was a lot. Phase two is when we generated three options. So these were hypothetical options and I'm going to go through them real, relatively quickly because phase three is where we bring it all together and, and decide, you know, what's best. So optional option or the dreaming option, um where we completely reconfigured the basement. We kept the teen center down there, but we found a lot of space where we could, like that abandoned kitchen, where we could expand and create recreational facilities for young adults. One of the things that we identified as a group was something in Rockland that could be used is recreation facilities, meaning like a gym situation. Um, and those abandoned bathrooms would serve really well as locker rooms and bathrooms. Already got the, you know, plumbing sort of set up and could be expanded into um bigger, more useful things. And one of the highlights of this area is where my mouse is now would be a new cafe that could be shared by the teen center and the rec center. And you would be able to enter, not in the main entrance, but on the side entrance where a lot of people enter through to get to the gym. You'd enter through this cafe area and that would be how you would access the teen center primarily. And the recreation area. So you wouldn't have to wander through the building to get to these sort of public zones. Then also on the, on the basement level, we considered and we got pricing for replacing and the gym entirely. Cause right now it is not a um, a regulation sized gym. It's for uh elementary school sized basketball and could be, um, we got pricing for a new addition. The first floor, we totally reconfigured and almost all of these options, actually all of the options, reconfigured the admin areas, the administrative areas where the youth commission and the daycare admin are kind of smooshed right now and, and the, the, it's a technical term. And we thought if we reorganized it, added a couple accessible bathrooms and created a security checkpoint that would be ideal for both daycare and youth commission. And then reconfigure the um community rooms to be bigger and give them a new partition, a new sliding partition. Then on the second floor, we sort of right-sized the daycare classrooms. So they're a little awkward right now. It could be expanded to be, you know, ideal sized and gave them all their own restrooms, which is what we would typically do if we were designing something from scratch. They would, could share between two classrooms, but right now they all sort of march out in a line and get in a line for the, the single boys and girls bathrooms. And it's, it's, it's okay, it's okay, but it's not ideal. Then the third floor, we took advantage of the change in level that I spoke about before. So on the second floor, I'll just mention that we replaced the ramp so that those classrooms that were, are raised up 21 inches now have an accessible ramp to them. And then on the third floor, we did something similar, but we took it a little further and took that raised area in the, in the west portion of the floor plate and turned it into a sort of a stage to have an auditorium, maybe for public meetings, for community theaters, for community dance. Anything like that, sort of small size, that's not a hearing room, but not, you know, a high school gymnasium. And utilize the two wing areas for town hall hearing rooms, additional hearing rooms and um multipurpose rooms. So the second option was a little less dramatic, a lot less dramatic. Where we just sort of, we configured the basement a little bit by, we basically tried to use spaces on the basement and second floor as they were. We configured a little bit on the first floor, similar to what we did on the previous option. Then the second floor, we just sort of used that abandoned classroom that I talked about to create a um STEM art room. And which really is just adding a sink and some finishes that make it easier for like sloppy artwork, you know, um cleanup. Then on the, and we added the ramp that's needed on the second floor. And then on the third floor, we added two hearing rooms and multipurpose rooms. Just to sort of expand on town halls hearing room capabilities. Then speaking of town hall, the third option was a very hypothetical option where in some future world, the daycare left this building. And the town hall offices moved in. We wanted to see if that would work. And the short answer is yes. And so in the basement, we kept that being the teen center and the cafe like in the first option. Um, and reconfigured the first floor where we don't have the daycare admin. So we had a little more space for some extra programming for the taught enrichment, which would stay. So there'll be three taught enrichment classrooms on the first floor. Then the second and third floor would be dedicated to town hall offices. So I know obviously this was a hypothetical option. In some future world, if this is what you decide to do, we can talk about where those spaces actually are. If they are in the second, third floor, it's all hypothetical. But we wanted to square footage wise confirm those possible in this building. So about half the building's square footage is what you need. Then for the site, we had two options, one where we expanded into the back. Like I was saying, the back was not very efficiently laid out. We create this pocket park up in the front of, along Union Street, a pop, a public park. Um, and we restripped the area out front and out back for parking purposes, but then we had this pocket park and then we have an infant toddler playground dedicated. And then a preschool playground dedicated in the back with, you know, traveling along this southern site border. You can come out the, the building here and come down here to each playground. Then the less, less expansive option would be just to reconfigure the front. Or you don't have that pocket park, you utilize this area to section off specific preschool and infant toddler playgrounds. You know, do the same thing where you add greenery along the street and restrike for efficiency, but not expand into the back. Included in all of these options, like I was saying before, finish upgrades, paint, ceilings, lights, flooring, um doors. The exterior repairs that I talked about, repointing, a lot of the building um needs to be repointed. Ceiling, repairing and sealing all the wood features, you know, so that more water infiltration doesn't get in and start or continue rot. And that I was talking about, the mechanical, electrical, all the upgrades, mechanical needs to be fully replaced. Electrical um needs to be resized to handle current needs, current code needs. New switchgear, a secondary switchgear. And then upgraded fire line system. Then the plumbing would need accessible fixtures, um high efficiency fixtures to reduce your water use. I said earlier, inflate the piping and, and then new boiler sump pump and a new water heater. Um, and accessibility upgrades. In these options, we did a variety of them. Once we got our pricing back, we realized that there's a certain rule that I, I won't go too far down the road is, but when we got our pricing back, we realized that the price of the construction that's needed for this exceeds a limit that will make us have to upgrade the whole facility to um, to be ADA compliant, mass accessibility compliant, which means we would have to upgrade the elevator and the shaft because the elevator itself and the shaft don't comply currently. And we'd have to do a bunch of other little things, you know, to um upgrade the accessibility of the building. And then um in each classroom, we sort of listed out for the estimator, the various things we need to include in the classrooms themselves to become EEC licensed. Now the fun part. I'm sure you're already having fun. So the synthesized design. In the basement, similar to the big option, almost the same actually, is the cafe. You come in from the side door, we've got these movable partitions so that you can open up the cafe to the recreation and teen area. We've got big barn doors between two teen areas and a stage for them to do karaoke, which is apparently big right now. And basically trying to make the, the area as flexible as possible while also sort of sectioning off a very dedicated fitness area that can then access these locker rooms. You know, privately. And then the gymnasium, and I talked about a potential optional addition to this gymnasium for knocking down the curtain on it and creating a bigger one. So this is a rendering of that area. So actually I'll go back. You're standing about right here where this door is. So the movable partition is open. So you're looking into the cafe and you can see the cafe and the seating over here. They already have a ping pong table that we can reuse. And the, the barn doors that I was talking about and the kids doing the karaoke on the um stage in the other room. And new finishes, like I talked about, OVT, new, new ceilings, new lights, just really freshening up the space. By making it more of a home. More of a community center. So the first floor, similar, almost exactly to the, to the big option, is reconfiguring the first floor. We put the daycare staff on the left and the, and the youth commission staff on the right because there was more space. They have more, um, they have more administrative employees and need more office space. Added a couple accessible restrooms for the public. So right now people have to sort of use either one in the offices, in the youth commission offices, or the children's sized ones outside the community room. So in the community room, we also added another movable partition and swapped the toddler and the infant room down here. Because one made more sense size-wise. And you'll see in each one of these floor plans, the elevator is new and the shaft is new. In the second floor, we decided to keep the classrooms essentially the way that they are. Cause like I said, they function and we would add things to them, furniture pieces and, and cabinets and stuff to make them better classrooms. And then utilize that classroom that's not being used as a STEM art room. And knowing that that's really just about finishes and a sink. So if it needed to be converted to the classroom in the future after growth, totally possible. And the girls and boys rooms would be expanded for the required, the code required fixture counts and accessibility. And adding, like I had mentioned before, the accessible ramp up to this whole left side is the side that's raised up 21 inches-ish. And the third floor is that cool, cool idea, um to have an, an audience and a stage so that you guys can hold potential community theater or some town business. Then keep this room that's already there for historical, but it can also be, you know, multipurpose. And then have an additional hearing room down here. Near the elevator, we kind of went back and forth about, you know, which of these rooms could be used. It made more sense for the public. If you were coming up for a hearing, take the accessible route. And we improved and increased the bathrooms to sort of fit with the occupancy of this room, the amount of people. And this is a rendering of that stage. We would, part of the finishes would have some acoustic panels along the walls, um new finishes, but movable chairs so that you can reconfigure it for whatever the, the use may be. Then lastly, the site, just a little bit more rendered. And a couple of, a couple of improvements from the previous options where it's the same idea, pocket park out front, pocket park out front. The infant toddler playground and the, and the preschool playground, but what we added was access from this back parking lot up this southern uh access to the front entry. Because right now, when they park back here, they have to sort of walk up a driveway. There's not really a, a part, a room for a, a sidewalk. So we want, you know, patrons in the back and staff in the back to be able to access the building safely and not have to deal with that. Now for the pricing. So we got uh final pricing on this. So the top line is sort of like the base construction. He does all of the, the construction without any additions to it. And then we have these um optional additions, like I said before, the gymnasium. And then we were thinking potentially, I'll show back here, having a ramp somewhere around here to get you up to, from this park, parking lot accessibly up to this entry where I was talking about the cafe, the cafe entry and the gym entry. So we added that as optional additions. Then there's a construction contingency added to that number. Which is definitely needed for such a building like this when there's a, we know that there are going to be a lot of surprises in an old building. We, when you start to get into it, you're going to find a lot of surprises. Then we went down through the soft costs, design team, meaning the architectural and the, the um our consultants, mechanical, electrical, landscape, structural, historical. Then FFNE means furniture fixtures and equipment, meaning um exactly what I said, furniture, basically everything. If you, I have a friend who says if you tip the building upside down, anything that falls out is furniture, fixtures and equipment. Then an owner's project manager will be required for a public project like this. The only thing that is to be determined are, are potentially needing to relocate during construction. And any moving and storage fees along with that. Then on top of that, we put a 10, 10% project contingency. Similar to the construction contingency, but it's sort of like an overall things that come up, you know, especially in the stage where you're in totally conceptual world, um you want to be safe with contingencies. And that brings us at 23 million about, without including those two additions. Then I don't know if Jen wants to chime in here, but we talked about some potential funding. Doug, you look like you're going to say something.
Yeah, if you, I can do the slide and wrap it up if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I don't want to step on your toes. We, we wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about some of the potential funding options because the $23 million number is obviously a, a huge number. And this is by no means exhaustive, but it's kind of some of the, you know, some of the biggest areas we could look toward. You know, the towns in the Community Preservation Act, you know, unfortunately we haven't really been in it long enough to have enough to be able to fund a project of this size. You are allowed under the CPA to borrow funds against future CPA receipts. So even if you don't have the cash in the bank with the CPA, you can borrow against it and pay the debt service with your CPA revenue coming in each, each year. But we, even with that plan, over 30 years, we still would not have enough to fund a project this large. I think the maximum that we could borrow over 30 years against CPA for a historic preservation project, the maximum would be about $6 million. There's other areas and Jen certainly knows more than me, looking at community development block grant, looking at mass development collaborative workspace programs and some public private partnerships. So there are definitely some other innovative programs, you know, that could help offset some of the cost. But, but I don't want to sugarcoat it, you know, really the, the vast majority of a project like this in Rockland would have to come from a debt exclusion. So that, and after the, the large elementary school project, we just funded, taxpayers just funded. And, you know, knowing we have a fire station project also coming down the pike, you know, this is obviously going to be a big decision. And I, I just wanted to kind of wrap up by saying that we obviously do not expect any kinds of decisions tonight. We really just wanted to have the architects present, you know, their thorough analysis and, and what we all collectively felt like, you know, was a, a good summary of the existing conditions and what some of the options could be. And then most importantly, what we think a recommended plan could be, if this is something that, you know, the board wanted to consider pursuing. My, my personal feeling is that, you know, we obviously can't make any major decision like this tonight. But I, I would recommend that over the course of this fiscal year, we have put this on future agendas and have more discussion about it because I personally think by the end of this fiscal year, we should have a plan and a decision about which way the board wants to go. Because I, I feel like the status quo is not the best plan. You know, we're going to continue to have major plumbing breaks and roof leaks and we're going to continue to sink more funds into this building. And it's, and while we're spending money, it's still as a whole, and it continued to, to deteriorate. So I think we should either consider, you know, funding, pursuing, you know, taxpayer support to fund a, a great project like something like this, or look at another option, which would be to divest ourselves of this building and relocate, you know, the youth commission services and look at potentially selling the building and for whether it's senior housing or, you know, another, another, like a sandpaper building, sort of artist studio. There's all different kinds of options out there. Those kinds of discussions, I don't think we should have tonight. I really want to take advantage of the architects that are here and the other team members, other staff that are on, on the Zoom call and I'll invite any of them if they have any, you know, closing comments as well. But I, I hope you found this helpful tonight and we'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. I just want to start by thanking Liz for the presentation and the other architects for putting this together. Certainly. Certainly you guys were thorough, a lot of food for thought here, a lot of great amenities and drastic improvements to a, a building that Jean and Rich Furlong have, Jean Blaney and Rich Furlong have done yeoman's work in maintaining over the years. But, you know, to Doug's point, it's, it's building that we as a board need to make a decision whether we invest or divest. So with that, I'll open up to the rest of the board for questions to the architects or any of the other people on the call right now. Ms. Nyman?
I don't have any questions at this moment, but thank you, Liz, for this thorough presentation. It's really eye opening.
Mr. Ryan? Larry?
It's on mute.
You know, it's going to be a contentious issue, I think, with the people who want to save it. But, you know, so much money to save a building that's so old. When, when the cost to transfer the people who occupy the building would be far less than the 23 million we're going to spend over the course of 23 years, or however many. I just, you know, I'm willing to look at it more. And, you know, I want to thank the company for doing a great job on the presentation. It's really easy to read and understand and it answers an awful lot of questions. And we'll discuss them as the days go on.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, first of all, Liz, I want to thank you, Alec, for your efforts, you know, with everyone in the town. Alec, and for putting, oh, you know, with such a thorough, oh, you know, presentation together for us this evening. I think it's very sobering, to say the least, in terms of, I mean, we knew the building, oh, you know, it needed a whole lot of work, but the, you know, to know there's a $23 million price. Alec of doing the work at this point is, Alec, is something really we have, Alec, we have to contemplate. Oh, you know, whether we have the wherewithal to, Alec, Alec, even approach it. Or, oh, you know, like if, oh, you know, like, or, Alec, if, Alec, or if we should really think about divesting. And, oh, you know, like as, oh, you know, like as Doug mentioned, you know, we, you know, the time has come where we need to make a decision and we need to come up with a plan. Because I, Alec, I believe whatever we decide to do with the building, oh, you know, we can still keep the building, hopefully as it is with the structure, with its history intact. Oh, you know, and then hopefully whether it, oh, you know, will become senior housing or whether it's a town building, we, oh, you know, however we move forward, well, oh, you know, hopefully someone will, in some way, shape or form, have the resources that the main, oh, yeah, to maintain the integrity of the place. Like, oh, you know, we're going back to what, oh, you know, what Doug said. Oh, you know, a few moments ago, I would like to, you know, if, oh, you know, if the rest of the board agrees really, oh, you know, once we get through the summer, Alec, and know where we are dealing with the other pandemic issues really before us still, you know, like if we could really, oh, you know, spend some time, Alec, as the board in the fall, oh, you know, really discussing this in more depth. Um, and also, um, as well, how it relates, you know, to our priorities that are shaping out in the master plan as well, you know, and whether, oh, obviously, I mean, we have a, a whole host of priorities as a town. Oh, you know, with, oh, you know, we're investing in the schools right now. Uh, like we have a fire station that also, oh, you know, we know, oh, oh, you know, needs a lot of work and upgrades and, oh, like and likely a whole new building. And I think we, oh, as a board and as a town in the fall, really need to have, oh, have a conversation about the, oh, you know, the capacity we have as, as a town to be able to do this and how we do it. And, and it's overwhelming right now to try to, oh, you know, think about how we approach, oh, oh, you know, this whole thing because the $20 million, $23 million is a lot. So that was just my thoughts. I don't have any specifics because I'm just trying to digest all of this as well. So, uh, thank you again, Liz.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Penny?
Thanks, Mike. Liz and the, and the team, thank you very much for this presentation and, and the in-depth analysis. I do have a couple of questions. So it's a wood frame building and we know that we've had over years, water infiltration going through the, through the bricks. As part of this, did, did, did you guys actually go into the walls and the framing to see what the overall framing of the building is and what condition that's in?
So we did our structural engineer on site and for, so he did poke his head above ceilings. And, and so where he could, he didn't do any demolition. But he does have, in our page one report, he did look through and to see what the structure was and sort of identify potential areas where there was water infiltration, a lot in the basement mostly. And so.
All right. So that's where, you know, as I'm looking at it, we actually got, you know, about 15% of the overall project set aside for contingencies. You know, when I'm looking at, at the two, at the two contingency funds that you've got, you know, and certainly from my side, the, the concern is, and I think you said it, when you've got a building that's 100 and whatever it is, 15 years old, wood frame, once you get into it, what are the things that you find? It's also, you know, we had talked about this earlier. I think we knew that the work that was needed in that building was going to push us over the threshold that, that then necessitated a, a complete renovation and up to ADA compliance. With the building being that old, do we run into issues with the ADA compliance or doorways? And I mean, are we talking about a lot of reframing and reconstructing in there to hit, to hit the ADA compliance?
Um, I would say that a lot of it would have to do, in terms of doors, it would have to do with your hardware. And there are some doors that I would say visibly, I could see that they were smaller. But I would think that a lot of them, they look pretty like they would maintain a three foot door. It's more about getting from floor to floor, getting up those, you know, raised portions, having proper signage, stuff like that. But hardware will be a big one for doors because you have a lot of knobs which aren't really.
Okay. I would jump in and say, just in general, I think in terms of how the cost estimate or put the estimate together. Because it's an old building with a lot of unknowns, because we're going to have to do these upgrades. And, and I think to some extent, because the, the, the construction cost situation is very volatile right now. I think when, I think he aired on the side of being conservative in a lot of cases. And I think when you do that in every single case, it tends to drive the, the overall cost up, right? So, but I think the number is high enough so that we can see that even if, you know, 10% high, it's still, in terms of the order of magnitude, it's still a lot of money. I mean, I think one thing that the, the town can do is sort of monitor construction costs for public projects over the next, you know, six months or a year and see, see how that trends. But I think.
Fortunately, we'll be able to do that as we start our school project.
But I, I don't think, you know, there, there's no, there's no sort of magic silver bullet to this. But there are a lot of small things that, you know, if everything went right, this project would not cost $23 million. But I don't think we felt good about coming to you and, you know, telling you, well, it's going to be a lot less because it could very well, you know, cost that much to do what, what we're proposing here.
No, I appreciate it. And then, and then the last part of this, you know, and I think Mike Mullen touched on it, you know, as we, as we're working through our master plan. This is, you know, for a town our size, it's a building with a lot of square footage, you know? So when we look at this and we have these conversations, it becomes even larger. You know, what, what, what is the plan, right? Because, you know, as you went through these three phases, you know, you're looking at really four floors. So there's a lot of square footage. So as a town, you know, what are the needs? You know, we do have a, a town hall that we're outgrowing and, and at this point is, you know, almost 50 years old. You know, we don't have a lot of community space other than what's in the, in the school systems. So there are some good things to it. But at that point is 20 or 23 million dollars worth the price tag of doing that. So, yeah, I think we've got a lot of, a lot of conversations ahead of us.
Thanks, Rich.
Can I just jump in for a second, Mike? Sorry.
Yeah, so actually I was going to say anybody, anybody else now that the board's spoken, Jean, Rich, Alan Cron, if you guys have any comments, feel free to ask.
So I just want to say thanks, Studio MLA. They were great to work with. They're very, very creative people. And so that was, it was a lot of fun and I learned a lot working with these folks. But I just want to say, when the Board of Selectmen move forward to make your decision on what to do with the building, you know, I know you'll consider the programming, both ourselves and daycare. And I'm getting all teary eyed because I'm just really tired of talking about the building. But, um, and it's, it's, it's all very, very important, I think. Sorry, guys. It's been a very long day. Between COVID and our sprinkler issues, both ourselves and the daycare are, are feeling like this is our home. I, I want you to consider the cost of relocating us, the cost of these programs and, and the possibility of even losing these programs. I think like Rich said, we don't have a lot of square footage in this town. With moving out of the building and having the sprinkler system put in last year. It was great that it was during the summer, but if it was during the winter, we utilized almost three floors of that building. So I think you just need to take into consideration that square footage and, and what, and, and where we could possibly go. I know I've spent and had lots of conversations with folks on where we would go, what we would do. And, and honestly, I just kind of put that to bed because I really don't know. I think we need to wait until the schools are built and, and that project is done. So with that being said, I just want you to consider all of that when you make your decision.
Mike, if I could jump in for a moment?
Absolutely, Jen.
I just, I also want to thank StudioMLA, Mike and Liz and the whole team were fantastic to work with. So we really appreciated that on the staff side. But I also, this is just food for thought because as we've mentioned a few times, obviously a $23 million price tag is scary on, on a good day, let alone in current times. But when we had mass development, look at Union Street and, and Development Action Strategy for revitalization of the area, the McKinley School was identified as a key infrastructure as well as an opportunity for redevelopment. And that's a large part of the conversation for the board, moving forward around what that redevelopment of McKinley looks like. Should the town wish to keep, to maintain the, the building and keep it? You know, one of the strengths that was identified in the report was that in fact, 10% of Rockland's population utilized the building for, for very fundamental and important public programs. And then, you know, it just, it is, it could serve as an anchor to redevelopment of Union Street. And so those are just things to, you know, think about as the discussion moves forward on the town side for the building. Again, $23 million is a hefty price tag. There are other projects needed in town and going on currently in town. But it is, it is, I think, seen and functions right now as a key, as an anchor property. So just a, just a few things to think about as we move forward.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else, Rich Furlong?
Not much to say other than this has been long coming. We've been trying to get this done for a few years. We knew that it was going to be a high cost and there was going to be some tough decisions to make. And that's what it's going to boil down to. But the building definitely needs some upgrades and some, some, a lot more TLC that we can give it on the funds that we have.
Thank you, Rich. To my point, Rich and Jean, you guys have been doing a great job maintaining that building. I know you guys spent countless hours up there. Jean, I, I know you referenced a couple of years ago, I'm sure it's still going on, but responding, you know, in the middle of the night to take care of issues and stuff up there. So, you know, any decisions that we make, you know, won't be made in haste. And I think as, as a board, it's important for us to continue to look at this over the next coming months and provide direction to the town administrative staff as to what direction we'll be going in, in the future. Obviously, $23 million is a big price tag, especially at a time where there's so much uncertainty with, with the market and, and with the job market as well. But, uh, but, you know, it was, it was a thorough presentation. You know, I thought, you know, StudioMLA, I thought you guys did an excellent job with the presentation. And it's given us a lot to ponder over the next several months and, uh, and I'm sure we'll have more discussions. and it's given us a lot to ponder over the next several months, and, and I'm sure we'll have more discussions, so Doug, obviously, you know, jot this down as, as something to bring up on future agendas, please.
Will do, and again, I just, I want to thank the firm, and, and as I noted earlier, you know, one of the, one of the best sort of references an architecture firm can get out of a feasibility study is a commitment that if we do at some point move forward with a project, we want to continue working with them, so I just wanted to say that publicly.
Excellent. Thanks, Doug. So if there's no further questions or comments, we can move on. Okay, not seeing any. Moving on, next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I don't have any.
Okay. Number seven, Town Ministers' Report and Correspondence, Mr. L.
Oh, you know what, I think we skipped over the town meeting recap, if I can do that.
Oh, did I? Okay, I'm sorry, old business, town meeting recap, yeah?
Yep, and I, and I'm sorry, yeah, Mike, did you want to say something before you left?
I just wanted to thank, you know, you and the town for, for all of, you know, all of the participation, and, and you guys have been really great, great partners in this. And I think we will sign off if you don't need us for the rest of the agenda.
You're all set, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Yeah, so town meeting, and I know we were, we were all there, but I just, you know, wanted to make a couple of brief comments. Want to thank WRPS, you know, Dave Cable-Murphy and Chris, and, and, you know, they did a tremendous job in wiring up the cafeteria and the gym, those overflow spaces, that was all very complicated, and fortunately, fortunately, we didn't need to use those spaces. I also want to thank all the, all the town employees and others that volunteered as ushers, I know Jean Blaney, who was on earlier, she was one of them, and probably others on this call as well. But that was really key because not only did that help us, you know, make sure people were socially distanced, but it enabled us to see households for people that came together from the same household to sit together, which freed up more space for others, so we could accommodate everybody in the main room. Fire department, you know, the health agent, Deli, the whole town clerk's office, everybody did a fantastic job. Most importantly, the voters that showed up, I was really pleasantly surprised that every single voter was wearing a mask, which is just tremendous. You know, we weren't sure how difficult it was going to be if people weren't compliant, but everybody was tremendously cooperative, and obviously, the meeting went by very efficiently and everything passed, so I want to thank voters for taking the time to come out in these, during this difficult time. My two big, the two biggest, I think, takeaway homework assignments that I have following up from town meeting is to send all the proposed charter amendments up to the state legislature. I think the way we crafted this was having each one as a separate article, so that in the event that the state legislature wanted to enact some, but not others, they could choose that, hopefully they'll pass all of them, but I'll send up all of those, all five of those separately to both Senator Keenan and Rep. DeCoste and have them file those bills. And then, secondly, as we just talked about with the McKinley School, we're going to get right on issuing invitations for bid to get that third floor done and have the building fully sprinkled. And either way, if we stay in the building, we're going to be in a safer building and we'll have that done, and if we decide, you know, at some point to divest ourselves of it, the building will have more value being fully sprinkled, so it's a good investment for the town either way. But again, that, that was my only real recap from town meeting, I just wanted to thank everybody for their efforts, and I was really very impressed for the moderator all the way down to all the voters.
Awesome. Thanks, Doug. Okay, next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated. Nothing, okay. Number seven, Town Ministers' Report and Correspondence.
Thank you. So I do have a number of items to talk about tonight. Just first, very generally, I know you've all heard about the governor's Phase Three reopening. I've been on a couple of calls, hearing a little bit more details about it. Some of the big highlights include, you know, with, with real restrictions, a, a limited reopening of movie theaters and outdoor performance venues, some museums and cultural historical sites, fitness centers and health clubs, and certain indoor recreational activities, and a caveat with low potential for contact. And then professional sports teams, so, you know, we're going to get to see some Red Sox games under, with an empty stadium, which I think we're all happy about. The, the call I was on earlier today with the Lieutenant Governor and officials from all over the state, they really talked about how this Phase Three that we're in now, we're going to be in this phase for a long time. You know, things have been changing very quickly over these last few weeks and months, but this phase that we're in now, there, there may be a few steps, you know, is how the governor's office calls it, so maybe some minor tweaks within it, but they basically said until there's real therapeutic options or, or an actual vaccine, this, you know, this phase is essentially where we're going to be for quite a while. I also wanted to recognize, I sent to all of you a copy of our COVID-19 operation and facilities protocol, so Jen really took the lead on putting this together, which I'm very appreciative of, we made sure to get this out to all our staff in our town buildings, and it was especially important to get it out right now, and we did because we had all of our town hall employees that were furloughed coming off of furlough today. Some of the library employees are, are coming off of furlough as well to help set up a curbside pickup. Unfortunately, the rest of the library employees aren't off of furlough yet because the building's still closed and the senior center is still closed to the public. But with that, you can see, I'm not going to go through it in detail, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask Jen and she can get into it more, but she covered all the major categories about requiring face coverings and social distancing, hygiene protocols, staffing and operations, employee wellness, cleaning and disinfecting, and where employees or anybody from the public can go to to get more information or questions answered from the town or from the state if they don't think things are being done properly. As part of that, you know, getting people off furlough and moving toward reopening, you know, we went through each office literally with a tape measure, trying to make sure everybody is going to be safe, looking at options with staggered shifts, et cetera. And the biggest, it was interesting, a couple of things were interesting that we found, one is that, you know, the public really has adapted in, in many ways to the new reality we're in, so for example, you know, the number of people that used to line up in long lines inside town hall to, to pay tax bills, you know, they're still getting their business done with a tax collector, you know, either online or through the, through the mail or through the Dropbox, you know, and I, I think I don't think we're ever going to see the same number of people physically coming into the building, queuing up to line up to pay taxes like we did before, because people really have, you know, migrated toward, toward other means. There's obviously still other, you know, other types of departments where there's still, there's going to need to be face-to-face interaction, and just logistically, within our, within our building, the biggest concern I had from a safety standpoint was with the town clerk's office, because their office to begin with was just very, very crowded and cramped under the best of circumstances because there's three people in a small office, but by nature of, virtue of the work that they do as the, the keeper of all our town records and then volume of paper and files that they have to keep, there's just no room in there to physically keep them safe and not be bumping into each other, and we have plexiglass for the customers, but it still wasn't enough, so what we're doing is we're going to be moving the town clerk individual, Donna Shortall, downstairs into, it's technically called the employee lounge, call it, call it a break room down in the corner. She's going to move down there with a whole lot of files, and then her other two staff, Liza and Christine, are going to stay in the clerk's office, that will enable them to properly spread out, have a more appropriate distance, and they're still the first main interface with the public, dealing with all the birth certificates, death certificates, all that type of thing. And this is going to give, you know, Donna a little bit, if you've seen her before, having to be, you know, in the back with a, with a screen up, trying to get a little bit of quiet to get her work done. This is going to enable her to be more efficient downstairs, be much more effective with storing our files and, and, and keep both customers and staff in the clerk's office safe, so that's a move we're going to be making very soon. And I think probably the, the thing that most people from the public are interested about, when are we going to be reopening town hall? We have a meeting with all of our department heads one week from today, which is Tuesday, the fourteenth, where we're going to be sorting out a partial reopening to the public, and my plan is to do it with appointments only. So essentially, what anybody needs to do is if, and we'll lay out all the details later, but it'll be a plan generally where if somebody needs something, just like they have been all along, because we've been open for business all along, even though our building's been closed, call up the department, talk to them, they might call the building inspector, Tom Ruble is here, Tom might speak to them, and they might be able to conduct their business electronically, via email, whatever. If it's something where they really need to come in and, and in person, face-to-face, show some plans, fill out an application, whatever, Tom will make an appointment for that person, come up, let them in, do their business and, and escort them back out, and we can do that department by department, and I think that'll be a very effective and safe way to, to move toward reopening, so there'll be more to come. We're going to sort out those plans next Tuesday, and I intend on shortly thereafter having that partial reopening with appointments only. I also wanted to highlight that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be having a Zoom meeting for all its members that I'm going to be participating in on the, on the sixteenth, and the topic is COVID-19 reopening, town, impact on the town budget, operations, all that, Senator Keenan, Rep. DeCoste are going to be there from a state perspective, I think Mike Mullen was also invited as well. I'm sure if any of you would like to be on that Zoom meeting on the sixteenth, I'm sure the chamber would be welcome, would, would welcome any of you to be on that as well, again, the targeted audience is local Rockland businesses and understanding reopening in town. Also, earlier today, we had a, a nice photo op with Plymouth County. Michael Laughlin was there and Kara was there, in addition to, to our town accountant, and we received our first set of installments on our CARES Act reimbursements, we received over fifty-two thousand dollars. And really, I just want to thank Biz for all the hard work she's been doing, it's, you know, the county's administering this, so it's different, it's a whole new set of processes, different from all the normal state or federal grants or reimbursements that we're used to, so it's been a tremendous amount of work and Biz is all over it, and we're, you know, we're ahead of most other communities, some communities haven't even gotten any requests in, and we have, not only have we already gotten three checks today, but we have more already in the queue. One major point I want to highlight is, you know, the state's coming out with new requirements for a substantial amount of PPE and technology that the schools are going to have to have in order to open up in the fall. So for the rest of the state, not Plymouth County, where Plymouth County is implementing the CARES Act reimbursement, and not Boston, because Boston's doing it, but for the whole rest of the state where the state's doing it, the state is funding those PPE and technology mandates through their CARES Act reimbursement. So this is all new, so we spoke, you know, Mike and Kara Nice and Biz spoke to the county about that today, saying, you know, they're, they're setting a whole bunch of their CARES Act money aside, you know, for like a future phase, and so we're urging them right now, unlock some of those future phases immediately, because our school department is going to need significant resources to ramp up to be able to open up in the fall, so we'll be working on that more, and, you know, Biz and I have a meeting with Dr. Cron and Jane tomorrow morning to talk about that further. That's all on the, on the COVID aspect of things. One random thing I wanted to mention, Mike and I met with one of our marijuana dispensaries just recently, they're now called Carnivana, they were previously called Fidelity, they're over on Waymouth Street. So they're going to be opening in early August, so this will be the first marijuana dispensary, both, they're both medical and recreational. They're going to open in early August, they're right now in, in detailed discussions with our police department to make sure they have a very effective traffic plan that's going to be in place, so there won't be any negative traffic impacts on a butter's. But the, the host community agreement that the town negotiated prior to my coming on board was a really strong one in favor of the town, so we are guaranteed revenue sharing, a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars a year, up to a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. So there's a good amount of revenue that's going to start coming into the town, and I believe the first installment of that is going to be a twenty-five thousand dollar check on the first day that they're open for sales. So that's good news, there's another one over on Commerce Road that's going to be next in line, I think they're still waiting their, their final approvals from the, from the state, but I, I was very impressed with Carnivana, you know, they, I was there before they did any construction, and I was there after, and they blew me away, the security, their protocols, they are, I think, a very impressive organization. Mike, I saw you turned your mic off, I didn't know if you wanted to add something for that.
Well, no, I wasn't sure if you were going to go to me, but no, I, Doug, I couldn't agree more, I, I had never been to a marijuana dispensary, and it, it was really, really eye-opening, I was very impressed with the security measures that, that Mario has in place. You know, just, just the, the building itself, it, it was impeccable, obviously, it hasn't been open and to the general public, but, you know, every, everything that he's implemented from, you know, his own security for, for, you know, his products, but also for the safety of the general public during, you know, these COVID times was really, really impressive, and, you know, he's a, he's an impressive individual, and I think he's somebody that I'm, I'm happy to have as a businessman in the town of Rockland, so.
Agreed. And then the last two things, the first is, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the FEMA flood maps that we had, the zoning bylaw to adopt the new FEMA maps, and then at the last minute FEMA told all the communities to abandon them, so we passed those over at town meeting. I was on a conference call with a number of other towns and officials from the state and FEMA yesterday, and it was, it was very interesting, I think they were a little, you know, defensive about some of the criticism they got for pulling back, but the long and the short of it was, they said there's not an issue with their maps and that the maps are not going to change, but they, they, they said they pulled back because some other communities were not able to adopt them in time, and it had to be an all-or-nothing process. So with that, you know, it, it might be possible that our, our planning board may not have to hold additional public hearings, if that's true, that the maps actually aren't going to change, but we will have to adopt it at a future town meeting, once they reinstitute a new six-month timeframe, at some point they'll tell us when it has to be done again, and I urge them to align themselves so that the end of that six-month period would be in the spring around, you know, May, June, because that's when most towns have their annual town meeting. They wouldn't guarantee that, so hopefully we won't have to have a special for it. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that at our next annual town meeting or the one after that. And then lastly, Biz and John Eller and I are preparing for a ratings call with Standard and Poor's for our first large bonding that we're going to be issuing for the school building construction projects, and I want to thank Biz and John, they're certainly doing the vast majority of the work and preparing for the call. Our main goal, we have a double A stable rating, and, and talking to our financial advisor, you know, we're just hoping to keep that rating, that would be successful, you know, given these difficult financial times of dipping into stabilization and spending free cash, et cetera. We've done some practice, you know, dry runs and had some, a lot of discussions with our financial advisors, so I think we're very prepared, I think we have a good story to tell about the town and how we're positioned to be a good investment for folks to buy our bonds. And the bottom line is, you know, while this is a horrible time economically for everyone, it's a great time for the town to be bonding a large project, because interest rates have never been lower, so this is really the only silver lining with this terrible economy that we're in, is it's a very cost-effective time for taxpayers to be issuing bonds for this project, so we'll make sure we get that done. And that's all I had for an update.
Awesome, thank you, Doug. Selectmen's comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and have the opinions and comments of only the individual member, Mr. Mullen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to our, to mention, Alec and congratulate Alec, Alec, I now retired, I now retired, I now retired as superintendent. John Laughlin on, Alec, Alec on his retirement, like in many, many, many cases, John has been the unsung hero of everything in Rockland, he literally kept our pipes running, and, and he did a damn good job at it. He's just, he's a gentleman, he's, oh, he's such a good guy, he worked extremely hard, Alec, in everything he did for the town, and I just really wanted to congratulate him on a job well done. Alec can thank him, Alec, for everything, so that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, well said, John's one of the best. Mr. Penny?
Thanks, Mike, I just want to say thanks to Doug and Biz and everyone else involved in regards to the school project. You know, when you undertake a project like this in such a small town, we don't have the resources of a larger town, and there, there are a few people that take, I, I think, an unfair burden in these projects. Biz, Doug, and Alan Cron are three individuals who are, are taking an unfair burden upon themselves for such a, a large project, and I just, I just want to say thank you to all of them. Other things, it was great seeing baseball back on the field at, at the stadium. It has been a long time overdue, and while I don't have children playing anymore in the stadium, just seeing the pictures and, and everything, it, it's great to see it. With that, just want to say to everybody, stay safe, be smart, and support the local businesses as we begin to open up. These businesses have just taken a beat. So, if you can, please support our local, our local businesses. So, uh, if you can, uh, please support our local, our local businesses. Uh, it, uh, it will benefit the town greatly.
Thank you, Rich. Well said. Mr. Ryan. Larry. Larry, you're on mute. Larry, you're on mute.
Got it. All right. I want to thank John Laughlin for the work he's done for the town of Rockland. Uh, John and I go way back to the glory days of softball in Rockland back in the seventies, uh, when we all played together and it was a big deal. Uh, we remained friends all these years together and, uh, some of us, uh, rode the, the mountain east, as we say, you know, and took the Law and Order and Boyce Daws and, and, uh, helped the town out. And John Laughlin was, is one of the better men to step forward and fill the job at the sewer departments, a troubled spot in my early years. I can't thank him enough. And, uh, thank you to David Taylor for stepping up and being the interim sewer commissioner while John has to take his retirement and the sewer commissioners look for a permanent replacement. Uh, we got a good team down there, uh, doing good things. Um, they're, they're watched heavily by all our commissioners and that's a good thing too. But I want to thank them all. Uh, above and beyond, uh, our, our financial team. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to thank the town of Rockland for allowing me to serve as chairman and vice chairman over the years. I, I don't really expect to ever go back to being chairman or vice chairman and only because, uh, we have, the board we have now that, uh, is going to be taken over and all funny dummies like me will be, uh, passing by the wayside in, in our day. So I just want to thank the town for all the things that, uh, they've allowed me to do for them. And, uh, I expect to work hard for the next couple of years and, and, uh, go out with a, uh, a, a bang, if you will. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Uh, just remember, you know, you've still got another couple of years. So this is no swan song for, for Harry Ryan here.
Hey, I'll be up before him.
I know. Thank God.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. I'm a, I'm a full part of the vote, but I'm just not going to be in a leadership role as, uh, as more of an advisor role, if you will, because, uh, the selectmen that are my juniors, which is all these, uh, are really getting your stuff together and doing a fine job for the town. Uh, we got all, thought every thing that could, can be covered and needs to be covered, covered. And, uh, we all, uh, helping our town administration to do the best job that they can for the town of Rockland. And we are doing that good job. And we will continue to do it. And, uh, town of Rockland, have no fear. The good people are here. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Okay. For the first time, uh, Vice Chairman Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank John Laughlin for his years of service to the town of Rockland. Um, he's been a personal friend and someone I've been proud to work with, um, over the past few years. I also want to thank my colleagues on the board for calling me as Vice Chairman tonight. Um, it is an honor and I have some big shoes to fill from Larry. And I'm sure I'll be leaning on him for some great advice as always. So thank you all.
Thanks, Kara. Um, yeah, I also, I also want to thank John Laughlin. Uh, John, John's been at it for a, a very long time. And, uh, his knowledge and expertise as, as well as his professionalism. And I think, you know, Mike said it, you know, uh, he's just a true gentleman. Uh, and he'll be sorely missed. Uh, and we appreciate him. Uh, I also, uh, want to congratulate, uh, Rich Purloong on his retirement, uh, 36 years on the fire department. You know, just, just another great classy individual, uh, in the town of Rockland. Fortunately, he's still active in all sorts of things, including this meeting tonight and the, uh, the McKinley School Building, and the park department. So, you know, Richie's not going anywhere, but, you know, congratulations on making it through 36 years, uh, on the fire department. With that being said as well, uh, the Plymouth County Commissioners, uh, that came down today, as long with Treasury O'Brien, you know, it was $52,000 today. Uh, we've been granted, I, I believe, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, upwards of 1.7 million, uh, should be coming our way over the next, uh, next few weeks, months, uh, from the CARES Act. So that's, uh, you know, it's, it's not going to do it all, but, you know, definitely cover a lot of what we've lost, uh, to this point, or what we've had to spend, uh, as a result of, uh, COVID-19. And, you know, another thing too, uh, Doug, happy, uh, one-year anniversary. You started a year ago today. It has been a tumultuous, you have to say the least, uh, without your, uh, without your, your leadership and guidance. I, I know for sure that, uh, that I, I would not have been accepting this nomination to be chairman tonight. Uh, so, so with that, you know, uh, I appreciate it, Doug. Uh, I know the rest of the members of the board appreciate the work that you do, uh, the, the calm, calming presence that you bring to town hall and, and the team that you really built up there along, you know, the team that you brought in, you know, that, you know, we brought in around you, but also the ones that were there before, able to get, you know, full buy-in, uh, from every department, which is, is very, very impressive. So, uh, keep up the great work. You know, you've got a few more years obviously as well. So about year one, it's always a tough idea. So.
Thank you very much. I just want to say I hope the honeymoon isn't over though. Let's keep the honeymoon going.
But as long as you got this global pandemic, okay, I think you'll go on for a while. And finally, you know, I, I want to thank the other members of the board. Uh, I said last year, I, I think it's actually this date or, or, you know, a couple of days ago, a year ago, that, uh, you guys made me, uh, the chairman. And, and at that time, you know, to Rich's point, you know, he made the, the campaign promise that, you know, or suggested that a chairman not be for more than a year at a time. And, and I firmly believe that. It was something that I think Mike, uh, Larry and I had talked about when we were, it's a three-member board. You know, I, uh, I, I struggled with it, you know, when it was first suggested that I do it again. Uh, but, you know, I, I understand with all that's going on right now, uh, it's difficult making a change in that position. And I look forward to another year, uh, and your continued support. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion. Second.
Not everybody at once. Okay. I got a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, vote. Mr. Mullen.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, and thank you all.
And Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
And myself. Meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, Rockland.
Good night.
Nice to see you all.